Where's your gym?
Evening, everyone. Sorry, I was a little late. Apologize. I'm calling the July Planning Board meeting to order. We have a quorum with the combined in person and four, three members on virtual. Steve Patterson, Ethan Di Maria and Dick Hermans. As per the governor extending the state of emergency through at least the 14th of July, we can continue to have meetings remotely. Okay, so. All right, first up is Mr. David Birch. And his lot line adjustment. Now, this was discussed in a pre-sketch hearing regarding possible major subdivision, but I guess there's a change. So, do we have something to pull up for?
Yes.
If. Just give us a second. We're going to share the screen.
That's weird.
Hmm.
But it's there on my screen. Right?
I said, wait, what about the offer?
Not really share it to me.
Share screen.
Should come up.
Yeah. What happens if you hit now? Files? No, that's not. When you go to files, that's where it shows this.
Oh, it's great when it works.
Right. I mean, let's like your share.
Yeah, let's see what happens.
Okay. That was weird. It usually shows it, so.
You want me to hold a hard copy in front of the camera?
Oh, I got it.
Well, we got it.
Thank you.
It worked. You all can see this, correct? All right, good. All right, Mr. Birch, if you want to speak up. So, can anyone hear Mr. Birch?
I currently own two lots. If you see that dotted line that runs diagonally, that's the current configuration. And what I'd like to do is have a lot line adjustment so that I could sell off the existing house on 3.782 acres. I have a buyer and he's ready to move forward. I'd like to do that. Then I will proceed in the second stage with the realty subdivision, which will be down to five lots. Originally, it was a seven lot deal, and then we went to six, and it's going to be five. But this lot will be taken off separately.
Wait, so are you, when you're saying five, are you including this lot in that?
No. It'd be this lot. Then the realty subdivision would proceed once this is.
With five additional lots.
Five additional lots.
And does that line of the 3.78 acre, does that conform to what was on the subdivision?
Yeah.
The map that you would show us at the sketch point?
Correct.
So that line hasn't moved?
No.
It's just, you're trying to do this piece of it first?
First, right.
And this is an existing house with an existing well?
Existing well, it's a good well. Let's get into well, it's a good septic.
Currently, I see.
We had a septic about three weeks ago. The wall from Claveret.
Now, was this piece, was this ever, refresh my memory, was this ever subdivided in the past?
Not that I'm aware of.
Drew, as far as you know, is that correct? This has no subdivisions on it previously, this parcel?
Yeah, yeah, Michael, I'm not aware of any.
All right, Warren, how would we proceed with this in light of knowing about the other aspects that he's going to do in the future? Or do we just handle this like a lot line adjustment? We're just.
I'm a little confused because I don't have the file in front of me. Is this 3.7 acre, that's coming out of a larger 23 acre parcel?
Currently, Warren, there are currently two separate lots. I own one lot, and I purchased a four acre lot, which if you see that diagonal line, it's kind of a screwy line.
Can you run the mouse down the diagonal?
So that's the, the line of the existing subdivision, that diagonal?
No, I meant, no.
Yeah, that's existing tax parcel one.
Run the mouse along the lines.
Yeah, there are two existing tax parcels, and so we're doing a lot line adjustment so that we can just sell that house off by itself.
So the house would be on a 3.782 acre.
Subdivision of the, of that other lot. It'll just be a separate lot.
So technically.
19 acres, 11, 21 acres.
So the house, which is on this kind of like very thin kind of slice of property. So it's, it's like you're moving the line like this way, and then, and then the other piece of the line like that.
Two more logical piece for it, and then the tail becomes part of other lots in the future.
Do you, do you understand what he's saying, Warren?
Yeah. Yeah, I think so. Do you have, can you bring up the rest of the map? Let me just.
Zoom out a little, or yeah, just. It'll give one click. There you go.
Yeah.
Let's say I go point out the.
The problem is that the map doesn't show what the existing, do you have a map showing how the parcels exist before the lot lines, before you?
Yeah, you see that diagonal line, Warren?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's.
That diagonal line, yeah, right there. That's the current boundary.
That's the current boundary.
All the way up, all the way up, yeah.
I see.
That line would go away.
Oh, I see what you're doing. Okay.
Line parallel with the northern border would be created. So it's two lots now, it's two lots later.
This is more logical, more logically configured, so that then I can just sell that house off on that lot.
And that driveway cut there, like, that's just kind of like splitting it in half, and would you have to, he get like another?
Driveway cut is fine.
Yeah. Isn't there an east for driveway? So that's the only hangup, is the subdivision.
Right.
That's a Warren question.
So I guess, yeah, that's what we're looking for, Warren. How do we proceed with this?
Well, it's really a sub, two lot, minor subdivision.
Right.
You can call it a lot line adjustment. The only issue I see is the issue of segmentation of the seeker review. I don't think we have anything in our code that requires, that addresses a situation where you're piecemealing a subdivision. I'm not sure. But you'd have the environmental review would have to be the review of all of the lots. What is it total now? It would be seven?
Six.
Six. So that would, you'd have to do a, I would do a long form EAF and just it's got to be for the full subdivision because we know that eventually he's coming back with the.
Okay, hold on one second, Mr. Warren, you were saying?
I, I said that the, it only impacts the seeker review that you can't segment. The seeker review, when you know that there's a portion of a project being presented, and that very shortly down the road, another project for the same property will be presented. So I don't think there's any prohibition on treating the subdivisions separately, but you would have to evaluate the impact of the entire subdivision when you're doing the minor subdivision for the two parcels.
So if.
Assuming that there is, I'm not, I'm not saying there is.
Seeker review, Warren, assuming, let's say, a six lot subdivision like it was previously proposed. Let's assume that's negged, and then we approve this plan in front of us, and then in a matter of a couple of months, they're back to create the additional lots with health department approval, et cetera. Would that just be a technical review, no seeker review with that portion then?
Were you, I'm sorry, you were asking me a question?
Yes.
Oh, could you repeat that? It's hard.
Sure. So being that we saw the larger subdivision map present, but we know that's the game plan, let's say.
Yes, but we do.
Trying to make sure I understand what, what you're saying about the segmentation. If we reviewed this plan as if it was a six lot subdivision, approved this lot line adjustment, and then in a matter of months, the applicant comes back to further subdivide parcel two, would that then just rely on the seeker review we're doing now, and we would just do a technical review at that point? Make sure there's health department compliance, erosion control plan, et cetera?
Well, we'd have to see what, whether he comes back with that. We don't know for sure he's coming back with that. But I, I don't know. I don't, I think you would do the environmental review now. I don't see it as being a really extensive environmental review, you know, but you would.
But, but we wouldn't have to do it again later if it didn't change.
Unless there was something unanticipated in the plan, which wasn't considered in this environmental review.
So basically, because we know that you have these plans, we can't pretend that we didn't, all right? That's how, as far as the seeker review it goes. And obviously, you could imagine reasons why, like someone might, you know, try to manipulate things. Not saying you are, of course, but just like, that's why they have it. So I, you know, I, correct me if I'm wrong, any member, well, first of all, any members have any questions? Steve, Ethan, Dick's still here, right? He's just off screen.
Yes.
No, no question. Yeah, I would assume that they would be amenable to this lot line adjustment. It seems fairly straightforward as, you know, once we go through the process. So, did you actually submit the application for this? You did?
Yeah.
Did you submit the EAF?
The environment assessment form?
No. All right, so, and you want, you, so. So Warren, we would see like both maps kind of thing, and, and then he would submit the long form with, with both maps attached and explain.
Yeah, when you do the seeker review, you'd have to say, well, you know, what is the impact of five houses on that road rather than two halves? You know, that type of, that's the way it would impact the, the review.
And you had already even got like the curb cuts approved, right? Didn't you at the last meeting? Did you tell us that?
I'm not telling you what the outcome should be. I'm just telling you what the process.
Right, I'm asking just the. Two curb cuts.
Well, I had, years ago, I had gone for a three lot subdivision on the southern.
Okay, so maybe that's what I was thinking, so. Um, all right.
We reviewed this.
Wait, Dick, what, what's up, Dick?
Yeah, well, we, we reviewed the six or seven lot subdivision, and now we're getting this, I mean, I'm not, I don't object to this lot line adjustment, but what assurance do we have that we're going to get the same map that we saw earlier, which we seem to think was okay?
Well, because if anything changes, we would, it would change, we would have to redo it.
It has to come back. It's not approved.
Okay.
Right, what's that?
Even if you assess the totality of the environmental review, the technical review is still outstanding on the additional.
Right, it's not approving that subdivision, it's just.
Right.
It's just evaluating the environmental impacts as a whole based upon this one's lot line adjustment, you know, minor subdivision that he's looking to do.
Yep.
So we just have to look at the environmental impacts of the whole project. And if we were to come back with something drastically different, again, it's not approved, and then the secret we would have to change, and we'd have to redo it. It would have to be updated, and, you know, just kind of like how Durst did, right? They had a, well, they ended up redoing the whole thing.
Well, you, you would, you would be conducting the environmental review of the entire project.
Yes. But what he was asking, Warren, is if we go through that environment. But, uh, what he was asking, Warren, is if we go through that environmental review and then down the line, he comes back to do the subdivision, but it's different than what we went through the review, he would have to redo the seeker.
Yes, well, seeker would be wide open. We, we would put something in the resolution approving that to the, to that effect, should remember that.
But we have to prepare for that, continue. Okay, um, so you gotta get that long form done. Submit it with both maps. So we're able to evaluate it.
This is phase one, that's phase two. Pat, do you remember this?
Yeah.
I could have jumped in the morning.
Okay, but Sardo was doing the.
Doing survey.
Right.
Pat was doing engineer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we would have to have a public hearing for this.
Yes, yes, you would have to have a public.
So we said it now, even though we don't have the EAF in front of us?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, you can give conditional prelim, preliminary, well, yeah, I guess we could give or you could do at the public hearing, you do conditional preliminary and final at the same time. I don't know, what do you think, George? Should, should they issue a conditional?
Well, I would think if the required map and EAF is here ten days prior to the public hearing, then that would be fine, because if anyone had any member of the public wanting to see it, or board members even, they would have time to see that. If it wasn't here, potentially that runs into an issue.
Right, so you'll give, I guess, conditional approval, set it down for the public hearing and, um, with the requirement that, that we, we get the whole map as part of the application.
Right, and EAF.
Right.
And, and, fully EAF, yeah, considering all the parcels.
August tenth at seven thirty. It's for the.
Phase one.
Phase one of the, of the subdivision. Again, a lot line adjustment, and a lot line adjustment, it's considered a minor subdivision.
I just moved the light.
Yeah, show it to him. Alright, so August tenth. I, I always forget, do we have to vote on setting that hearing?
Yeah, just do a roll, you know, voice vote.
So can I have a motion to set the public hearing for August tenth, conditional upon uh, us receiving, uh, the, the board receiving the EAF and other maps and other, and any other items necessary for the EAF evaluation, uh, by August first?
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, it passed unanimously. Public hearing is set for seven thirty August tenth, at, here at Town Hall.
So would that be the final procedure?
Um.
People are very eager to have.
Well, the people will have to listen to the public at the public hearing and we have to take into account what you give to us. I wouldn't expect an approval that day. It would probably be the next meeting.
Second meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we.
We have to take all that in, we have to, you know, synthesize what people say and, and all the information, you know, again, just like snap, you know, it's a long form EAF, it's a long form EAF. So we're gonna have to look at.
I think it requires a two thirty-nine M referral to the county.
Yes. Two thirty-nine.
So, so we, we have to send them the full EAF and the correct plans when they review.
So we need everything from you so we can send it to the county. We'll have thirty days for them to get back.
The two maps.
Yeah, have the two maps attached explaining, explaining what's going on, how this is one part phase one, this is phase two. Yeah. I mean, you have an engineer, right? Or, so I guess he'll help you fill that out. Alright, is there any other? Anything else to do with this tonight, Warren, or we're good to move on?
No, but, no, that's good. We have any other, do we have another matter on?
Uh, yes, we do.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have no, I'm fine on this application.
Okay. The next um, item, do you have one? Is the application for a bakery, site plan, uh, bakery and cafe, site plan review? Warren, did you get the, uh, do you have this?
Uh, quickly, I had a tough, yeah, if you can, uh, maybe put it on the screen, cause I, 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 I don't have my file with me, I'm at home.
Yeah, I don't even, we don't have a map yet.
Oh. So what do we got, what, what do we got? There was something that came in the email, I mean, I.
Yeah, we have.
Oh, yes, we do. We do have a map here, so we're gonna get that up. You know, it's that Pilch Drive where the Chinese restaurant, uh, used to be, in the doctor's office.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, and, uh, it's, I'm sorry, uh, your name?
Reverend Sarah.
Reverend Sarah. Alright, uh, you wanna just come?
Oh, sure.
A little closer? Alright, um, so I'll hear you good from the mic here. Alright, so if you wanna just start, will you tell us about your, your project and?
Oh, okay, um, yeah, I was, I was really interested in opening up a bakery and cafe, um, at that Chinese restaurant place. Um, it looked like it could quickly be made into a functioning bakery, restaurant, or cafe, I'm sorry, use my word, and, um, I'm gonna be doing, um, live, like, uh, live, like, online. Um, and the post office is right there, which works for me, so I'm gonna, so do some retail, like, people coming in, then also I'm gonna try to sell, like, do, um, like, live, like, have a Twitch, so I can try to sell stuff, um, online and, uh, hopefully maybe wholesale too. So that way I, you know, I don't know how much business I'm gonna get, hoping to get good business, but this gives me o- other ways to make spring come.
Um, and it says cafe too, so you'll be serving?
Yeah, food, yeah. Uh, be making, you'll have a breakfast, lunch, dinner. Uh, you know, just not a lot of choices, you know, small menu, and, but mostly focusing on the baking side, unless, you know, some people are saying, oh, you know, they may want me to do wholesale amounts of food, but you know, that's only if I get those kind of orders, otherwise I would just do a small.
And we see the map up here, so you would be on the south side of the building, I take it?
Uh, I have, it's where those, those big trees are, or if you know, that, where the Chinese, uh, store were. Yeah, so you just, you just came, right by Stuart, right after term from Stuart's.
Right, uh, but I, I'm here, so in.
Oh, um, whole building turned.
No, it's not, there's still the, this physical therapy office is still there, right?
Right, it's right before the physical therapy.
Right, so it's this square on the bottom part of the building here, so there's the building. And then, uh, Tricia, just read the mouse, Tricia down. Yeah, just see, that, that's square right there, right? That's, that's what you're talking about?
Oh, right, I, um, I, so I mean, I, uh, the doctor sent this over and I sent it right to Mr. Weaver. Uh, Tricia said, I'll send, yeah, I mean, I, I can't, I don't, I really don't have any of these maps, I'm sorry. And I just got it like the other day, so.
So Drew, is that, uh, do, do you agree with what I'm saying? That's the where this is?
Michael, that's definitely the, um, former Chinese restaurant area.
Just in that square of the building, the rest of the building is other suites or whatever?
That's correct, that square is set somewhat separately, was the Chinese restaurant.
Um, and so and what is the requirement in the code, Drew, for this is just site plan review, correct? It's a approved use in this zone?
Yes, yes it is.
Uh, but as far as a site plan review, we're gonna have to see about parking there and, uh, lighting. I don't know, what am I forgetting? The entrance that is there. Uh, but there's a whole bunch of requirements, obviously, in our code for a site plan review that, I mean, you're gonna have to get someone to be able to or, you know, to draw on, on a map, like, where this exact, exactly what portion of the building you're gonna be using, what entrances, what lighting, uh, what part, how many parking spaces you have. Anything else, George, on for you?
I'm assuming it's already asked, or, technically, obviously, was previously a restaurant, right? So that's a good thing.
So she's not having to get bored, that's probably gonna be.
Yeah, she's need kitchen permits and stuff, but that, that's.
That's nothing to do with us, but it's.
But I'm saying, how, how long ago was the restaurant in operation?
Drew, do you know? When did it close?
I'm not sure, at least a couple of years, yeah, probably three years.
Yeah, and also, I mean, I know from my town, I have to, I have a department agriculture because I'm gonna be doing it online, so. I think actually.
That's the state.
I mean, that's not the US, we separate from us.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not understood, what do I have to, I have to prepare something else?
Right, so the code is gonna stipulate the requirements of a site plan. Right, for a site plan review, so you need to have a professional who does that. An engineer, architect, something like that, sometimes a surveyor can do some of it. Prepare a document, right? So this is a land surveyor's map, which is the base of a site plan. That where the parking space is, where's the water line, where's the sewer line, where are the permits, environmental assessment form, lighting, all those kinds of things that will actually be fleshed out and submitted as a package. That's why I was asking.
What is that called, for the site?
Site plan, so, yeah, you can look it up on the town code, which is online. It'll tell you that everything that's like.
Drew, Alvin, do you know what section of the code or where that is located? Or perhaps you, can you email her a?
I would ask an engineer.
Absolutely.
So, you know, where she needs, what, you know, that page or that section of the code?
Yes, I can do that.
If you get a professional, they should know, be able to look at this and know what to do.
And then I have to come back to the meeting or?
Yes, and the bigger thing is, you gotta, if she needs health department approval, that's gonna be your major.
That's your main.
I need that before I submit the site.
You just need to start doing it, cause they take a long time. There's nothing to do with us, you know, you, you can't open without that, but it's nothing to do with our, we can approve it without, you know, we could just say pending, you know, the health department approving it, but, uh, they, uh, you know, they're, they're, they take a long time. And, and.
The, the thing is that he has to, you know, and fix it up, and I can't, I can't sort of things, so he does, like, the thing that has to be fixed and. So I can't, I have the health department coming to us all to fix stuff.
No, that's different. Like, you're thinking the kitchen permit, we're talking about the outside sewage disposal. Wastewater, bathroom sink water, stuff like that, that all goes into the septic system, right? So that has to be approved and reviewed by the health department. Previously, it was a restaurant, presumably it had all of these things permitted, but I don't know. I can't speak for the health department, it could be that rules changed since that was approved, and then there was this opportunity to bring it up to code. So they can tell us.
Um.
Because it's been closed more than a year, they have to look at it in there.
So then they would be just looking at the, not really inside, but the outside?
Right, they're, eventually they'll be inside as well. Kitchen. Unless you get covered under Ag markets, then I don't think the health department gets involved. Again, your design perfection.
You, you need to have people to now help navigate you through this process, that we can't really.
Right, we can't design it for you.
Right, and we can't advise you.
Yeah, I, I just went under the, um, true.
Well, this is the first, no, this is the first step, this is called, uh, sketch review. And then, uh. Warren, is there any, anything else that, uh?
No, no, I mean, I'm just looking, trying to get the thing online, you know, does it require a special use permit or just the site plan?
Just site plan.
Yeah.
Permitted use.
So, you know, there would be, have to be a site plan application. I'm interested in knowing how the, uh, the access road is gonna be maintained.
I filled out a site plan application.
Uh, uh, yeah, so, um, yeah, I had a question about that too, I mean, so this road is attached to Dale's piece of property, correct? And so this must have some sort of easement access way over it, because this is not owned by Dale, right?
This, this is a town road for certain point?
It is not, it's, Warren, what is the status of that road?
I don't, I don't remember, uh.
I thought it was a town.
It would have been on Dale Mitchell's map, but we don't have that. I, I, I think it's still considered a private road and, and there's a requirement that they maintain it.
Arguing over the maintenance, okay. Cease is right of way to New York State, it was never dedicated to the town.
No, right, I don't think so. Yeah, they share that right of ways, I remember, that property in the back probably has to contribute.
All potential, yeah, between landowners.
So is that anything that she has that language on the map about that and the site plan regarding that or anything?
Yeah, we, we would wanna know how the access is maintained as part of the site plan approval.
Right, so the, you have to talk to the building owner. And, you know, he's gonna tell you what the agreement, to give you documentation, what the agreement is for access on that road, because that road's a private road. That's not a town road off of eighty-two.
No, I'm, I'm a little confused with this. I don't, I don't own the property, right? I'm, I'm just, uh, so he's the one, so I, I'm asking an engineer to do a site plan for property that I'm writing, that's, that's.
And then you also need authorization from the property owner to be here.
Yeah, there's a form, uh, so provide the plan board, well, she has his name here.
Yeah, he, he's filled it all out, but that's what's announced.
Oh, did he give the statement, signature of owner? Oh, he did sign it. He signed it, so sir, by the applicant's familiar with?
He filled the application, I just put it like.
Sure.
I didn't really know.
Is this, is this all we need, Warren, as far as her acting as an agent of his in this matter, or is, is there another?
Well, it's not a subject, I mean, it's just site plan, I mean, I.
So we don't need that?
She has to go through the, uh, her, I imagine that she'll have to retain some sort of professional to help her on this. Cause you're gonna need a site plan map.
As far as the owner of the property, he signed the application?
Yeah, they can, they can give.
That's good enough?
Yeah, for her, her to sign, or if she has a lease agreement that's already been signed, that would be sufficient.
No, I, I, so, yeah, I just, I, I gave him a check and, but I thought, I thought it was gonna be opening soon, I didn't know, he didn't say, nobody said anything about site plan.
Well, this is, this is what you're, you're just site plan review process.
But I, I understand, but nobody said, like, after this, you have to make a site plan, then it's gonna be, I, I just thought, like, after this meeting, you will move it, like, it open.
Right.
After, just fortunately.
So, so you definitely get that professional, Drew's gonna send you, he said he would email you the section of the code with the requirements that in our code, what is required in a site plan for us to review. There's certain things, like, like I started to say, it's not exhaustive list, I'm sure there's others I'm forgetting, lighting, parking, sewer, you know, whatever's going on.
I have to tell an engineer the site.
Yeah, hell, he should know what to do, once you explain uh, what you're trying to do.
And talk about that easement, that, uh,
Yes, that has to, we have to, you know, what is that agreement, has to, you to be indicated on the map or a separate piece of paper, explaining, you know, saying what it is, you know, from the owner of the property. Whatever documents, he, he must have some sort of document saying he has access.
Um, it, uh, it was mentioned in the application, but a deed, and I asked the owner about it, and he said, so, yeah, this is site was. Whatever that natural list, is that gonna be required?
So he needs to require, you can get a red, red page. Our success.
So, so what is it, he just says they have a.
The deed.
Copy of the deed.
I asked him to just.
That might show the easements, access, maybe stipulate.
Alright, so. Oh, uh, and we don't have to do a public hearing for this, right, Warren?
No, we, 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 everything has to be submitted before we schedule a public.
For, but. But we have to do one, or this is a, or discretion, or?
I, I think you better, yeah, I think for site plan for commercial use, yeah, I don't think you can get away without doing one. Even if, e- even if it's discretionary. Right, although it shouldn't be too complicated, cause you had a restaurant in there before.
Right. Okay. Alright, so you got some homework to do, and, you know. Yes, this email, do you have treasures in there? Some, if you have any more questions, and Drew's gonna send you that. A professional will be able to help, really be able to navigate through this process.
Right, and then, um. And I would need, I'm a little confused, I have the right to work with the engineer directly, or I have to go through?
No, you work with the engineer, but you just, uh, well, no, Warren said it was fine, he signed this, only signed the application, so you. It shows that, you know, you have permission to be doing this, oh, we just need the deed showing that he owns this property.
Right, he'll need the information on easement.
Right, or he has, they asked for.
And then, um. You also, uh, if I start the process with the Department of Health, you need that information too?
They would need it, they would ask.
Okay, oh, so they need the site plan first, or they?
Well, they need like your sewer, the way, where your septic is, or whatever's there, you know. And all that, they're gonna ask for that.
They're gonna need the engineer to work with.
But really, kind of distressed to get them started as soon as possible, cause they're, they're gonna be the bottleneck time loss.
Right, so the question is, yeah, which, well, so, I mean, in my town, they said, is, is most of your business gonna be. Online, or is it more gonna be retail? If it's, if it's more online, then you go to Department of Agriculture, if it's more retail, then you go to Department of Health.
I don't, I don't.
I think they're talking about different kinds of.
Right, it would only be a Department of Agriculture if you only own a farm, right?
Well, like, a lot of the stores operate on.
Oh, do they?
Yeah, butchers, bakeries, a lot of them do ag markets, but once you start doing more retail, certain types of stuff, ag markets, it's gonna get a health department permit. So again.
But that has nothing to do with our process, nothing to do with our process.
That's something for you to discuss with your, your engineer, and have them help you navigate that process, you need to make that decision.
And, and Warren, does that matter at all? Doesn't matter at all as far as our permitted uses or whatever, it's. Doing the wholesale, or she's gonna be doing more wholesale or online?
No, no, the only issue would be, uh, site traffic, I mean, we would just probably discuss that. I mean, if it's wholesale, there's less. Hell, there's more traffic, but.
Doing more, you know, person, in-person business would require more traffic as opposed to.
Yeah.
Have you guests come there once in a while?
But I don't think you're talking about levels that will rise to any significant impacts or any problem.
And we need a short form for this? Warren?
I'm sorry.
We need a short form for this, short form EAF for this?
Um. Yeah, short form is probably more than.
Yeah, yeah, as environmental.
I mean, it's not a type one action, it's a, it's an unlisted action.
Okay. Well, good luck with getting all that stuff, good luck with your adventure once it gets approved. Uh, thank you for coming in. Welcome to stay. Do some housekeeping next, uh, alright, uh, so, uh, the only other thing we have. Uh, is, uh, minutes and stuff, so Warren, I think we're done.
Yeah, I'm gonna head out, see y'all later.
Take care, Warren.
Hey, Warren.
Drew, do you have anything for us beyond?
No, it's been a pretty quiet month.
Okay, uh. I think I don't, I don't think I have any questions for you, anyone have any questions for Drew, or?
Well, I just, condolences on the passing of your mom.
Oh.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Sorry, Drew, I, I, sorry to hear that.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
So there was some farm doing something on eighty-three, somebody else that, one of the members that had it, did we find out what was up with that?
Yeah, we did, um, they have, they're gonna get, I've spoke to them, they're gonna get just a simple zoning permit for a farm stand. Everything they sell there, they're, um, producing from the farm, there's no outside products being sold.
Okay.
It'll be a simple zoning permit, simple zoning permit for them.
Got it, alright, good. Alright, uh, well, thank you, uh, we're just gonna do the minutes next, uh.
Thank you.
Did everyone get to review the June minutes? If, uh, if so, can I have a motion to approve the June minutes if anyone has any, unless anyone has any changes?
Uh, I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? The June minutes have been accepted. The only thing I have is, uh. There's a solar law workshop meeting on Monday the eighteenth, this is coming Monday. At seven o'clock, the ZRC is gonna be meeting with the town board, but if any planning board members are interested. And wanna come down, you're welcome to, it's, we're trying to make it hopefully the final meeting. Preliminary meeting before the town board starts to take up the local law adoption process. So, uh, if anyone wants to come, uh, I don't know if they're gonna be broadcasting, you know, it's the town board running it, not me, so.
You have the time of that meeting?
Seven o'clock. On the eighteenth. Obviously, you know, there's been some opportunities come through for. Continuing education, if anyone needs hours, please, uh, you know, take the, uh, online stuff. And, uh, it was, there was something just coming up, it went around the other day, it's something, I actually might do it. Alright, uh, anything else, anyone else? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Scott, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Michael, see you next month.